Ben was easy.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
You're not seeing what your name anymore, are you still?
Are we ready, Ms. Schumacher? Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, those of you who are here and council chambers and those of you enjoying the frigid temperatures, been watching us from home. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for this Monday, February ten, two thousand and twenty-five. We have one item for discussion tonight, and that is the Natural Environment and Climate Change Program, the Implementation Plan and the Work Plan, and we have our Planning Manager, Ms. Spear, for that tonight. So I'm convinced that we all digested all three hundred and eleven pages because it would have been printed material, we would have been killing trees as opposed to saving trees.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we don't have a smart board tonight, so we're all going to be looking up at the big screen as we walk through this unless you can find it on your own laptops that you have. This is a proposal, this is an idea, and the intent tonight is to have a discussion among council members to decide if this is something that the Planning and Public Works Department, as well as other city departments, should proceed with. The concept here is not to create anything new in terms of substance, but rather new in terms of process internally for the city, because we've had a number of initiatives, policies, requirements surfaced over the last three to five years regarding climate change and the natural environment, very generally speaking, and it has become increasingly apparent that they are right now handled separately when they could in fact be handled more efficiently as a group. So the idea tonight is to walk through a few of those things to give you a status update on your two thousand and twenty-two Energy and Climate Change Work Plan, and then see if this is, this new concept is something that you're supportive of the, of the city proceeding with. So background, as I kind of just went through, there were specific things that the city itself adopted, for instance, the two thousand and forty, excuse me, two thousand and fifty tree canopy cover goal of forty percent. But then there were also other things that were done, for instance, the tree retention and preservation regulations in past years. Last year, we had some work and funding dedicated to the starting of an urban forestry program. And then there's also been some significant changes to state law that we're now having to start to comply with related to climate change and resiliency was what that was called, it was a bill numbered eleven eighty-one. And so with all of these things coming together now again, there are concurrent things that we're having to do that maybe it makes sense to combine in terms of effort, funding, and maybe even seeking grants. But first, to give you an update regarding the two thousand and twenty-two three-year Energy and Climate Change Work Plan, this is something the city council adopted several years ago. There were, if you recall, out of the original creation of an energy and climate change element for the comprehensive plan, about eighty-five or eighty-nine action items. Those were reduced and recommended to you at the number of about thirty-two by the Planning Commission. City Council sent it back and said, that's still too many things to try to grapple, particularly within a three-year timeframe, so it was further refined down to fifteen items ultimately, what you see here. And out of those fifteen since two thousand and twenty-two, nine have been completed, four are ongoing, and then there's two that have not yet started, and there's reasons for that. So I've highlighted the ones that are either not started at all or are ongoing. First of all, not started is the five-year plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The reason that one has not been started yet is because the city was waiting for guidance that is currently being developed by the state about forward steps for this one. The other one that's not started is a regional electric vehicle or EV infrastructure strategy with surrounding jurisdictions. And again, just the opportunity hasn't yet really coalesced around this one, so the intent is that some, someday this may happen, but it hasn't started yet. And then you have the ongoing items, which are working with the county and Pierce County cities to develop a regional and best practice approach for addressing climate change. This is something that Mayor Waylon, you helped form, the Pierce County, countywide, what do they call themselves, the Pierce County Climate? Thank you, there's a lot of Cs after the first P. In any event, that group continues to meet regularly and Lakewood continues to participate. The second is dealing with the I'll call it advocacy by both Lakewood as a member of Southside Military Communities Partnership, but as a city itself, advocating for the continued improvements further south along the I-five corridor. This is now something that the military, as well as the Nisqually Tribe, support for different reasons, but it is a multi-billion dollar project that would require state and federal support. The intent, though, in terms of energy and climate change is that there is a threat of overtopping of I-five down where the Nisqually Delta is located because of the way the current bridges and highway structure are limiting natural movement in the delta, and the waterways are becoming more and more stressed by that, so. It's that in terms of military ability to, to move during times of crisis. It's also just a regular freight corridor, obviously, that needs to be functioning all the time, and then again, the environmental concerns there. Now, the third one, number twelve, that you see is the periodic, normally it's on every two or three-year process to update our building codes in keeping with how the international building codes are then adopted by Washington State, and then local governments have the opportunity to make local amendments or adopt, as is. So that just continues on a regular basis. And then the other one that is ongoing is developing and promoting an urban forest management master reforestation plan. And again, that is part of what's in your packet this evening is some first steps towards moving to that one to completion. So what are we talking about in terms of this overall natural environment and climate change program? This incorporates some of what was included in the two thousand and twenty-two Energy and Climate Change Work Plan that stemmed from the comprehensive plan element of a few years ago. But there, everything you see here on this page, which is page three hundred in your packet, I should have said that a long time ago, slide number four. But it's the results coming from the two thousand and twenty-two Tree Canopy Analysis, some of the, that data. It is the remaining items out of the three-year Energy and Climate Change Work Plan. It is complying with state law E-two SHB eleven eighty-one, and the name of that bill was Improving the State's Response to Climate Change by Updating the State's Planning Framework. Then we had, if you'll recall, a few years ago, University of Washington Evan School came, a great team of students provided a implementation guide with some recommendations for internal structure as well as financing for an urban forestry program. And we've used some of those pieces out of that report already, but it continues to have a lot of information we can draw from and use. Then in two thousand and twenty-four, there were a number of things that occurred. There was the big periodic review where the city's comprehensive plan was substantially rewritten, reorganized. And in addition to updating the existing energy and climate change element, there was a new natural environment element added as well. There is right now pending an application the city submitted last fall for an Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant with the federal government, and with the change in administration, we simply don't know at this point if that's going to move forward or not. If it does, it would give us about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars toward this effort. And then last year, we did also commission the Lakewood Urban Forest Assessment Report, which was a combination of on-the-ground plus LiDAR and what they called flat assessment, so three different types of analyses of the Lakewood tree population. We had also last year the Pierce County Department of Health and a number of other agencies worked together and Lakewood coordinated as well what was called a heat watch report, where people actually went out and drove around in Lakewood on one of the hottest days of the year to compare temperatures in different parts of the city and see where the heat was the highest. And then there was again a canopy analysis done by that same group, so we now have not only the policies that you see listed here, the studies that have been conducted and commissioned by the city, but we have several sources of data that we can use to move forward. In terms of funding, this is something that cumulatively speaking could end up being about a one point four nine million dollar budget over the next five years through two thousand and twenty, mid two thousand and twenty-nine. We have already spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the ARPA funds that the council allocated to the urban forestry program. A hundred and fifty thousand of those dollars went toward that tree assessment from last year. The City Tree Fund has been identified as a source for a number of different things tree-related. There's quite a range of things that these funds could be used for per code, and that's up to almost four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There is a grant that is actually being released in three pieces because it is supposed to go over three biennia. So we've received our first two years allocation out of this grant. Altogether, it would be seven hundred thousand dollars to go toward the work that we're doing to comply with eleven eighty-one. And then the grant that I just mentioned from the federal government, which at this point, we just don't know if we're actually going to get. So assuming we do, again, the total is one point four eight seven million dollars for all of this work together. So if you were to try to explain this graphically instead of all of those words that I just used, you can think of a number of things getting dropped down into a funnel and out comes a natural environment and climate change program with that funding again that you see there. Roughly speaking, the categories would be the tree canopy and urban forestry, climate change and resiliency, and then greenhouse gas reduction and energy efficiency. So all of these things again are already incorporated into either existing policy and code or are being required by state law. But the idea here is to make the internal administration and implementation of all these things more efficient, and I think the other thing is, given the way we can concentrate the work and avoid duplication of effort, it can become more cost-effective, and we can also seek a wider range of grants potentially over the next few years by doing this all in a, in a group rather than trying to separate things out and seek dollars that way. So a couple of things I mentioned briefly, but to reemphasize, this is nothing new. These are all things that are already included in various parts of our code or policy. The other thing that's important is that this is cross-departmental in the city meeting, it's not all planning and public works, this is going to involve parks, recreation, community services, communications, legal, and even the police department in some cases would all be involved over time with implementing some piece of this program. And then the other things that are going on that aren't proposed for inclusion include the two thousand and twenty-six update to the Parks Legacy Plan, and I am working right now with a number of different city and other jurisdiction staff to help update the Pierce County Hazard Mitigation Plan because that now has to incorporate climate change into its items as well. So what we would be doing over time, assuming this program were to go forward, is make sure that it and the legacy plan update and other items over time would also all be done consistently. So what would this look like? The idea would be to have some kind of overarching program, in quotations, that would explain the various areas being covered by what it would include, so tree canopy increase and maintenance, making sure we're answering that forty percent citywide tree canopy cover goal by two thousand and fifty, but also looking to partner with people as well as agencies and organizations to try to get voluntary tree planting happening in the city, whether it be by residents or by business owners. We do have a certain number of trees already in the existing tree canopy at about twenty-four and a half percent, that's what our assessment report found. And so we're looking at fifteen to sixteen percent of an increase between now and two thousand and fifty, which is a big jump, particularly given the amount of growth that's also supposed to be targeted in the city between now and two thousand and forty-four. A second piece is the urban forestry program launch, which is slightly different from tree canopy increase itself. Urban forestry generally is looking at the city-owned properties, the trees on city-owned properties and rights-of-way, and making sure that those are sustainable over time. And sustainable may in fact sometimes change the number or the size of the canopy on those parcels because, for instance, curbs, gutter sidewalks may be taking some of the right-of-way that currently has trees standing on it. At the same time, over time, there may be trees that are unhealthy to the point of needing to be taken down and then replanted in order to ensure ongoing greenhouse gas reduction and just overall tree health. The third part would be the climate change and resiliency requirements coming from House Bill eleven eighty-one. And then greenhouse gas emissions specifically, both PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council and the State of Washington have GHG emissions goals that we need to be consistent with as a city. And then also there's energy efficiency proposals, initiatives, and even if the federal government moves somewhat away from that, the state government continues to push on those things as well. So looking at city operations and buildings, but also again, an opportunity for public outreach to reduce energy use citywide. So there's quite a few here, I don't know if I'm going to read each and every one of them, but over the next few slides, you'll see a number of items that are, are considered for either the ten-year timeframe implementation plan, or maybe they get pulled into the three-to-five-year work plan, but they are all coming from existing sources, so again, starting with the remaining items that are either not started or ongoing from the Energy and Climate Change Work Plan from two thousand and twenty-two. And then you would see, assuming we have those dollars for energy efficiency specifically, over the next biennium through two thousand and twenty-seven, there would be energy data collection, developing goals and strategies around energy efficiency, a lot of public engagement, and then updating our comprehensive plan to reflect the results of all of that work. And then a lot of this is coming from what is now being required by eleven eighty-one. Again, this is a, a large swath of requirements that have been added actually to the comprehensive plan through the GMA changes the bill made. First of all, there would be the creation of a climate policy advisory team, sort of an advisory committee that would last throughout this multiple-year process, and then it would be up to the council if you wanted to keep that in place as an ongoing board or commission as time goes by once all of this work is initially done. But the idea there is to get a well-rounded group, subject matter experts on a number of different topics, different groups and populations within the city being represented there to provide feedback as this whole program moves. And then also we have climate change and resiliency element getting updated, dealing with greenhouse gas emissions and reductions, and then climate resiliency, meaning we are starting to see as time goes by, a little more predictable of what's going to happen with climate change, and we can start to look at local effects and how to, quote, be resilient against them, i.e. being prepared for them and how to mitigate against them or react once they happen. You then have, in the twenty-five to twenty-seven biennium, the land use element needing to be updated out of our comprehensive plan. And I should preface this as well with saying, there are a number of things in eleven eighty-one that the city already accomplished with its twenty-four periodic review. So for instance, the consultant that we have working right now on the requirements for the twenty-three to twenty-five piece, which will be part of your twenty-five comp plan amendments coming to you this spring, they are basically saying you've already completed these items, so it's a very light touch this time around to make changes because the city has already done what it needed to do. But come twenty-five and moving forward in the next two bienniums, there's a little more to do. Looking at urban and community forests, reducing miss, excuse me, risk to lives and property due to wildfire. When you look at twenty-seven to twenty-nine, there's a number of changes related to transportation planning. And so it's looking at the traffic demand forecast as well as the element within the comprehensive plan, a number of items there that need to be supplemented to what they are already. And then in addition to that, we have the need for an urban heat resilience strategy. So for instance, taking a look at the data that was collected this last year in the heat mapping exercise and figuring out, okay, now that we have this baseline information, what can we do to help mitigate and retain resiliency in the city? And then looking at planting plans for municipal projects, be they in parks or in rights-of-way or elsewhere, looking at climate, a climate resilient and native plants to incorporate there, and then continuing forward with our urban forest management master reforestation plan. So all of those things together would be incorporated into this initial natural environment and climate change program. The idea here tonight is to see if this is something that the council is comfortable with, have any other questions about, are ready to have the city proceed, and if so, we would be coming back to you with some additional detail, but this is kind of the red light, green light discussion tonight. So with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions? I do have a question I'll toss out to get the conversation started. As mentioned here, of course, I've tried to work on a regional approach because, you know, one, one might think that doing what you can, as best as you can, in one little microcosm called Lakewood may have a minuscule, you know, infinitesimal impact on the region. But working regionally, certainly one thing that the group is trying to do that you mentioned, what do you understand to be potential countywide planning policy changes in this regard that might seek to do more of a regional approach?
Yeah, it's a matter of moving, as you say, Mr. Mayor, beyond the what can we do in our geographic boundary and in our own land use decision-making, but what can we do across the boundaries to try to make more of a difference? I think transportation planning and one reason why you see it in eleven eighty-one makes a big difference because cars cross jurisdictional boundaries all the time. It's also seeking common actions, so everyone is it's not necessarily cross purposes, but maybe different focuses at different times by different jurisdictions could minimize or slow the effectiveness of a particular action item. So trying to have everybody walk in more of a lockstep at the same time and make some of those same changes at the same time. For instance, the EV charging station that was mentioned in our own plan already, if everybody is working on this at the same time, and again, seeking funding, seeking economy of scale with contractors, that is something that could be more successful than if each of the jurisdictions were going after that piecemeal. So it's, there's a lot of things up in the air, there's a lot of things still to be figured out, but working together rather than working in silos is the preferred approach that that group is taking.
Thank you. Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, yeah, Ms. Spear. I guess that what I would say is that I don't have an objection to organizing the work as the way that you have, it's that what I'm but I do have some concerns that I don't understand is that the discussion that if for, for ten years, we would create no new policies or new actions, that all that stuff is done, because I don't, I don't perceive it that way. I think, I think that, that first of all, the natural environment and conversation and dealing with climate change is, is an evolving area over there, and so that I'm really looking for a a process where at, at the policy level and at the budgeting level, that the city council would be considered to be looking at those things. Now, as, as, as council develops policy or things to do that, I think that it, the, if, if a program such as this is viewed by the city manager and senior staff as the best way to go about implementing policy, I'm all in favor of doing that efficiently. But I don't necessarily want to establish a program now that says we know what we have to do for the next ten years, because I think the next ten years, there are going to be informative moments and elements to it. The other thing is, is that as I listen to your presentation today and, and read this, I am not quite sure what happened to the other seventy climate change policies that were on the proposed list of things that we were going to do. There's sort of two tiers of that. There were the, the next fifteen, which were the ones that the Planning Commission and staff at that time initially wanted us to, to move forward on, and we thinking we were, we, we wanted to be realistic about what could be accomplished in two to three years, we narrowed it down to to fifteen, we actually narrowed it down to fourteen and then added the, the tree program on, on, on to the, on to the list to go forward. But I was happy to see that more than half of those are listed as completed. But in my view, that means there is some capacity right at this time to begin to, to select from that list things to do that, to, to, we don't have to have a, a new set of fifteen, maybe we, we need, we just add seven to it from, from the existing list that, where, where we were. So I, what I don't want to do is, is in order to create this program, which is the internal mechanism in this state, is to, that to be the result of hitting a pause button on moving on to doing some logical next things that we want to prioritize. You know, and I also think that we have developed some of the comprehensive plan changes in that, as we constantly look at the capital improvement plans in the city, whether they're for transportation or parks or, 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 or others, that we've sort of made a commitment to considering environmental issues in them in our work as a council in terms of both budgeting issues in them, in our work as a council, in terms of both budgeting and doing, and of asking questions about design and, 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 and other things. And so, I wouldn't want a, to sort of, to hit a pause to develop a new internal working relations, set of working relationships and stop moving forward. And moving forward includes adding new things, okay, or both from the pre-existing list of things that were, were good ideas, as well as something new that comes up to do that. As I read your thing here, it seems to think that any new ideas would come from new state requirements, okay, to be able to go and do that. And I, so I wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't want to do that. I think that if organizing in this way to do the total body of work is the most efficient way to do that, I don't, I don't even necessarily consider that as something that needs council approval. I think that's an internal working thing that the city manager can implement is the working relationship with the, as how the staff goes to accomplish things. While the council though, still takes a look at policy questions about what do we want to accomplish, which will take places when we review what comes forward as the proposed updates to the legacy plan and of things that will come to us from Olympia to go on. In the adopted 25-26 biennial budget, what kind of natural environment, climate change items are funded?
At this point, it is all grant-funded, other than the tree fund, where it hasn't really been allocated to anything yet. There is a standing balance there, but it's not been obligated to any particular action. So, it would be, if this did not move forward as a, as an idea of a consolidated program, it would be a matter of figuring out whether that 474,000 goes toward the urban forestry program or some other initiative that is in the remaining items from the original, original energy and climate change implementation plan.
Okay, I guess that I look at it a little bit more broadly, because I think that we have, we have, we have funded major updates towards Lake Park, for instance, which are going to have elements of natural environment, climate change, tree, things in it, and, 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 and those things are moving forward, that we've, on the transportation side, we have been designing, there are projects that are under design, and we have, as the comprehensive plan says, that we're, you know, the considerations of street trees and that, and, and those are being worked into the budgets for, for such projects that, that, that are going on. So, so I don't think that this is as, and, and those are things that are, been working effectively and I think could move effectively with the relevant departments responsible for specific, particularly, capital initiatives, okay, and continue to consider and have the elements of tree preservation, environment, national environment items, being able to go and do that. One thing that I did think is, in terms of a policy change, in terms of looking forward to go through that, is that I read the tree report, okay? To be honest, I, I needed to use a dictionary for, for some of the terms that were there, but that it caused me to reflect upon our 40% goal for tree canopy, that, and, and a 40% goal for tree canopy, you know, we did that, things going on. But the report really indicated that maybe we had, we have a conflict between, the difference between tree canopy and prairie, where we have certain areas of large areas of the city that the report indicated are plantable with trees, but that we also have, in terms of natural environment situations, like a significant areas of the game preserve or of Fort Silicon Park, that I think that the, one of the visions of the public would share is that they want areas that are forested, but they want to not lose the historical prairie environment that, that is tied to the history of where we are and that are, that are going on to do that. And if there are some hundred of acres that we are, want to identify as indicative for prairie, that then maybe that is a, a matter to look at of that. I think that 40% is a good number, but that then there is, there are maybe another, there is certain acreage in the city that is sort of exempt from that calculation, and that it's that there are certainly, I think, 40% in residential areas and of prioritizing getting additional tree canopy in the census blocks of the city that are the most efficient in it, in particular, but that are densely populated, is a, is a strategy that we have to, to work to, to look at. So, I, so I think that that's a policy that could be re-looked at it in terms of being better defined, other than just saying, citywide, we want 40% of tree canopy to be able to go and do that, to be able to go and do that. So, I think that there is work that we want the staff to accomplish and that they need to be organized efficiently to be able to go do that. But I think that there is policy work that we, as a council, will need to do in the next three years and five years to do that. And I certainly would like to not wait on updating the work plan for 25 through 27 to replace the completed items on, just, just organizing a, this plan, because we've got an established list of things to choose from that we could, could add to it. Now, part of the problem is, is that we didn't do that as part of the budget process for 25-26. So, when we looked at those items, we'd have to look at items that maybe are not so significant budget-wise to be able to go and do that. It's probably something that we should have done, if we thought about what items were we going to bring forward from that list to be able to go and do that. But I certainly don't want to pause the process of having periodically updates to the, to the work plan as items get completed and thus freeing up capacity to be able to work on things.
Let's see if we can get some other comments on this, too.
Do you mind if I answer one, one thing? Just, and I should have, I guess, said this at the start, but one reason it's being called the natural environment and climate change program is, the idea here is it's time for the three-year energy and climate change plan to get updated or replaced or something. This would be the replacement for that other work plan. So, it would be incorporating, as you say, council member items that might remain from the original energy and climate change work, but other things as well. So, I'll just leave it there. Thanks.
But yeah, as I understand it, to recapitulate here a little bit, it's not going to propose new policies because we've already done, done the policy work and
Right.
had the strategies. This is really kind of the implementation, cross-departmentalized program.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Laura Selle, and then Council, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Spear, for presenting this. So, in theory, there should be some mutually beneficial programs, right? And that's why we're combining them together, and there should be some economies of scale that help us save overhead, if nothing else, by combining these. How careful do we have to be about color of money for things like tree preservation versus greenhouse gas emissions and dollars that have been assigned to those or grants that went to one or the other? Do we need to keep track of that carefully still?
Oh, absolutely. And you're not going to find any grant that says you can, quote, "double dip." If you're going to do something funded by one funding source, you're not going to be using another one to pay for the same thing. However, if you have a work program that incorporates, I'll just say, tree planting that's related to a transportation grant, as opposed to urban forestry grant, you're actually getting the trees without having to apply for the urban forestry grant, right? You're doing that work with another color of money, but still getting it done because you've expanded the range of what the program would, or what the grant would be funding. So, yeah, we're not going to be able to just suddenly find new duplicative pots of money, but we may be able to look for more that can cover parts of these various pieces to get to our ultimate goal.
Okay, thank you. And then, have you looked at the total cost savings? Have you done any calculations of the reduced overhead by combining these programs for the city?
No, at this time, not yet.
Got it. Then, are other neighboring jurisdictions using sort of combined programs from these as well? Do we have best practices that we're looking at, or are we out in front?
I think we're pretty much out in front. And part of this is, we're reacting to, at a local government level, regional, state, and federal things that are coming down, as well as the interest locally with the city of Lakewood itself. For instance, going back to the idea in 2022 of the adoption of the energy and climate change program, as well as the update to the tree preservation regulations. So, just saying, hey, we've got a lot of different things coming at some of the same overall issues, how can we handle this better as time goes by? So, I wouldn't be surprised, quite frankly, if by doing this, there's going to be some interest from other jurisdictions to see how Lakewood handles this, and if it's something they could do, too.
Sounds great. And I would think we could probably present on this at that Pierce County Climate Conversation Group, because they'd be, they'd like to hear that and share it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? So, expected outcomes from us are really a nod to proceed, right, with the N E C C approach to the program?
Yeah, and so, what that would look like legislatively is you would not see from us a presentation regarding a new or an updated energy and climate change plan in 25 to replace the 22. You would be receiving something different as a recommendation, once we've had a chance to go back and really be strategic with what could happen in either a three-to-five-year timeframe and/or the 10-year timeframe. And the other thing I should have said, and a council member Branstad clarified, this is not saying no change in those timeframes. This is what we have as of now, and you and any other lawmaker is going to have the ability to come back and say, hey, we need to update X, Y, or Z. So, you would have a different program coming to you for adoption sometime later this year, rather than a replacement of the 22 plan.
And that plan would include perhaps some of the other tasks on the big list, of which we bit off 15, let's just say, perhaps a bubble to the surface as a worthwhile bucket of tasks or goals that we could accomplish over that next biennium?
Right, and, and part of what will shape the list will be, if we are starting to braid these things together, what new funding sources might be available to us now as a result? Because again, as, as of right now, you have, we're doing this, and so, we have to apply for this kind of funding. Or we have this, we have this tree fund that will cover this, but not other items. By combining like this, we're going to be able to get a little more creative.
Does that help? Anything else, Mr. Branstad? Is that, clarify a few things? You guys could?
No, I, I think, I think, you know, overall, it's, it's a move towards efficiencies, and I just don't want it to be a completely fresh start, but there's some continuity of our momentum in this area. Because I think that we, as a city, have better momentum along this than some of our neighboring cities do.
Absolutely. So, our EV battery is at a three-quarter charge, and some have yet to plug in. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I'm okay with what we're doing, although I find this absolutely, I, you know, I want to be, I don't want to be cynical, but when I read page 309, and I can't even understand, "update the transportation element," and it says, "address forecasts of traffic demands," okay, I get that, "and needs outside of the city to inform an element that balances transportation system safety and convenience to accommodate all users of the transportation system to safely, reliably, and efficiently provide access and mobility to people and goods." There's at least two or three subject matters in one sentence, which I think is really spectacular.
You can thank the state legislature.
I'm not going to hold you to answering.
That's verbatim out of House Bill 1181.
I was hoping that you hadn't written it.
No, no, no.
And, and then in the next section, and then in the next section, too. And I, I mean, I'm, it's, it's, you can't implement what you, you can't possibly understand.
Exactly. With the, with the mandate.
You know, so, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for putting all this together. I think it makes sense, and I think we can have more success when we are, are trying to do more things within that, rather than breaking them all off separately. So, so good on you. Thank you.
I mean, to me, it kind of gets down to even the granular thing. I'm sure it's, you know, Silva can probably speak to it as much as anyone, but the granular piece of whatever the final design and site plan worked for the Alliance project takes many of these things into consideration, so that we don't have, obviously, a big asphalt heat island, which is not what we want, which is not what is part of the master plan development permit, or the site plan likely to come to fruition shortly. Those are the kinds of things we get the low-hanging fruit and accomplish. Okay, well, I think you have consensus to move forward, Mr. Branstad?
Yep. And your comment brings to mind is that I do think that we, this is an area that, while we are discussing it and, and looking at it, I think that it is, is an area that we need to spend more deliberate in communicating with the community, the initiatives that we undertake that have positive elements in this regard, is that climate change, you know, going back to some data about the, 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 the greenhouse gas emission improvement based, per traffic circle, and like I said, that, 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 you know, the climate difference that the Alliance project would make, and, and, and some of the others, I think that that goes off, and you may want to consider as one of your coffee house projects, a, a, a thing to, 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 to enunciate that to the, to, to, to the community. Because I think there is, in our community, a significant number of people that have an awareness of it and, 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 and concerns in this area that, that we want to do anything, and I think we want to be able to communicate our own story of successes, okay, and, and our, and our story of challenges, going off as opposed to letting the news media talk about all of the dire aspects of, of, of climate change that are going off, and, and the implication that nothing is being done. You know, we're not going to change the world, but we can change our community in, in, in positive ways, whether it's do things to reduce heat islands, or, or, or create trees, or just make, do things with greenhouse gas emissions, and, and, and as we talk about with, with this building, making it more energy efficient. We should take credit for that and, 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 and promote our successes.
Point well taken, for sure. Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Ms. Spear, great work, and thanks for the overview. Okay, well, that was our item for discussion tonight. We have a host of items scheduled for the next city council meeting on February 18. Let's see, got an MOU with the Parks for Parks for Design Services, among other things, and execution of agreement for design services related to the H-Barn project. So, lots of good things coming up for the next meeting. But now, we have an opportunity to hear from Mr. Caulfield. I know he's got a few reports tonight, so the floor is yours.
Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, got a handful of items I'd like to give you an update on, as well as I get a consensus on, I think, at least one item here. The first is, our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawesworth, has been in contact with our good, good friends at the Nisqually Indian Tribe, and they would, once again, And they would once again like to partner with the city to have a Chief Leshai Honor Walk. And the date that has been identified is Friday, February 28th from noon to 2:00 PM at Fort Silicon Park. And it would, the, the gathering area would be the plaza area. You know, where the barns and the new parking lot adjacent to Wahoff Lake comes together. And then the event itself, there'll be a number of amenities out there, including some food trucks. But really the walk, the honor walk will follow the, the proposed Nisqually Loop Trail. And we'll have some preliminary signage out there of what the cultural and historical nomenclature is going to be because that's underway right now, again, in partnership with the city and the tribe. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And, and I believe the reason that we're not walking down Silicon Boulevard from the memorial that's over at Oak Plaza, Oak Brook Plaza is because of all the construction that's going on. So, yeah, so. Actually, I would say that's the best the roads looked in, in a while and it's going to actually look a whole lot better when they're done. So actually I do want to commend the contractor. The contractor is doing a fantastic job out there, working on, on, on each side of the roadway and trying to minimize the impact of the traffic flow. I've been through there a couple of towns myself. Also on Friday, the 28th, and this is in one, we're trying to, to move to, to, to move the timing a little bit later in the afternoon. But is a groundbreaking event for the South Tacoma Way from 80th to 88th. The last segment of South Tacoma Way here in Lakewood. And this would be a ribbon cutting event with Congresswoman Strickland. As the council is aware, she was able to secure $2.5 million in support of that project. And right now we have it scheduled at 1:45 PM. However, our team is going to be meeting with their team tomorrow morning. And we have asked two things. One is see if we can push that out to 2:15. And then secondly, also extend an invitation to Congresswoman Strickland and her team to attend the honor walk and even provide the Congresswoman an opportunity if she would like to speak at that event as well. If the Nisqually Tribe would be so inclined, which I'm, I'm, I'm sure they, I'm sure they would be. Also moving on tomorrow, the police department led by our police chief, and I know Mayor Wayne has been invited, but certainly any member of the council, feel free to attend. Will be having another coffee with LPD at the Lakewood Town Center Starbucks right over here from noon to 1:00, 1:00, 1:00 o'clock. Also want to report that last week that the city hearing examiner did approve the Alliance Residential Development. And it was quite lengthy. There was a, a large number of comments that were received. But in the end, the hearing examiner did approve the project. There were some conditions that city staff had suggested, which were also included in the, in the, in the ruling. And I think I did pass that on to you. It's on our website as well. So that project is looking to move forward. On the financing side, we, we did learn that the city has been awarded a grant totaling almost $45,000 to cover the, the, the cost of the police station investment grade audit. As you know, we have these building compliance issues that have been brought upon us by the state legislature. Going back to 2018 and 2019, we've already started on City Hall, given the size of that. But the police station is up next. So the good news is we did get a grant to do the audit. Probably the not so good news is that whatever the cost is going to be to implement that audit is money we currently don't, that we don't have. However, as you know, we are working with our legislators to try and get some different metrics incorporated into the state statute about when's a good time to do these improvements and perhaps when's a good time not to do it. For example, with City Hall, the return on investment is measured in decades based on the savings from the multimillion dollar investment. So that's something that we're, 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 we're going to continue to pursue. On the not so positive side, and this is a statewide issue. The city, we were working with the Washington State Department of Commerce for some federal funds called Preservation and Reinvestment Initiative for Community Enhancement. And it was specifically for funds in support of mobile home parks. As you know, we have 26 here in town. And we had applied for $5 million and put together a great application, had identified Rock Northwest, who owns a couple of mobile home parks down in, in, in the Woodbrook area. And we had identified infrastructure improvements and, and the like. Unfortunately, the whole, the, the state of Washington, our whole application was not approved. So a number of other states did have theirs. The state of Washington did not. Commerce is going to follow up with HUD on the federal level to find out, you know, from an after action report on, okay, kind of what, how can we do better next time? The good news is that, you know, we do have, you know, a lot of the heavy leg, legwork done on that. So if and when future HUD monies become available, we'll be able to again partner with Commerce on that. So I will say we're, we were a little disappointed on that one. I know, you know, we don't expect to get every single grant award, but we really did think that between our city and other cities that we really did have a, a good shot here at the federal level, but.
Was it the coastal states that didn't get funding or?
I, I, I don't know, Mayor. I didn't, I didn't look at that. So I, I think, I think a lot of this was, quite frankly, was in process prior to the presidential election. I would like to think it was based on merit. Also, if Ms. Spear is still here, I, I, I do want to again recognize her. She has been facilitating our comprehensive plan through the certification process. It passed another hump with PSRC by getting approval from the, I gotta find my notes, the, the Growth Management Policy Board. So next up, it goes to the Transportation Policy Board and then the full executive board. But based on what we've heard from PSRC staff, it, it, it should get all the way through. In addition, Ms. Spear has submitted our plan for a Vision 2050 award through PSRC. So should hear about that later on this year as well. And I think it's well warranted, particularly given all the work and effort and the community outreach and the community engagement. As well as the fact that the city of Lakewood, we were the first one to get that okay that we were going to get certified. I know there's been some concern or some concerns raised or questions raised about the gravelly thorn shared use connector path. The Planning and Public Works Department did follow up with WashDOT and they did confirm that the project is expected to be bid in the March timeframe and that bids would be open in May and then construction would be forthcoming later this summer and continue into 2026. So.
No funding impediments?
That's the latest that we have right now, Mayor. That's the latest as of right now. Also, I know Mayor Wayne, you, you had asked about the City Hall Beam Repair Project. Just as a bit of a refresher, the city council appropriated over $880,000 in support of this project, which includes repairing several beams, but also placing an all weather sealant on all the other beams that's also needed to be done to preserve that, to preserve that wood. To date, about $42,000 has been expended mostly on the planning and the architectural and engineering side. Right now, we expect to have our architectural plans here in the next week or two. Once they, they are then going to be sent to a structural engineering company for their review, for their analysis. And then once we have that, that could be another two to three weeks. We will then go through the permitting process internally. And then once we're through that, we will then bid it out. So we're looking at about the April, May timeframe to bid it out. Though our plan has always been to construct in the summer. And the reason being because this work can only be done in the summer, particularly the application of the sealant. So we are on track and things are, are, are moving along. So you'll see the consideration of a, of a construction contract sometime or repair contracts sometime in the, probably the May or June timeline. And then the, the one thing I'd like to get some consensus on would be, we have our next Lakewood Connections Magazine coming up. And so our communications manager, Ring Grimley, had suggested, quote, Lakewood at work for you and, and focusing on areas that are planned for 2025, such as transportation, infrastructure, parks, planning, public safety, support services, things, things along those lines. And also maybe framing it in a little bit more graphic manner as opposed to all words. So that's something else that we're, that's something. So unless the council had any other ideas or suggestions, we, we wanted to put that on the table. Not to put you under any pressure. We are on a timeline.
Yeah, of course.
So and then, but we would get a draft to you quickly as well. Are you good with that, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I think the only thing I'd like to include in addition to the map and the future focus sort of stuff is making sure that the park project is kind of on that map for the Colonial Plaza. Obviously it would be, it would be part of the.
Oh, the downtown. Yeah, that would be a park improvement. Absolutely. Yeah. And we would drive, this would be driven by your, your, your goals as well. That's, that's correct. Yes. Thank you for that. Yeah.
Mr. Bran Center?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I think that that's a, a good idea. And if we have a map showing where projects are, but when we've got like some insets off to the side that, for instance, on, I don't think that, that the public is fully aware of the master plan, all the things that are going to go in towards Lake Park. And then, and, and, and as you mentioned, the Colonial Plaza. And actually, I think that they all know that American Lake North Park is closed, but they don't necessarily have good visibility about this summer, what is it really going to look like? And so, so you know, you're having the map within visuals as opposed to words are, I think, much more helpful.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. And then just in, in closing, just some upcoming events other than the ones I already spoke about. This, this Saturday is the 27th Annual Asia Pacific New Year Celebration. They're having an opening ceremony at the Tacoma Dome. And I think, Mayor, you are going to be attending that and, and providing some words. Next Tuesday from 2:30 to 3:00 PM, we do have a legislative meeting with Senator Conway down at the state Capitol. If you're interested in going, please let me know. I, at this point in time, I plan on it going. So I'd be more than happy to drive down. So please let me know. And then also next week on the 19th and 20th is AWC Action Days, which beginning last year is now held at St. Martin's University in, in Lacey, which is a little bit away from the state Capitol. But it's a good event. So if you plan on attending, let us know. And myself with the city clerk would be more than happy to help you register there. Then on February 20th, the Boys and Girls Club is of the South Sound is having their annual Legacy of Hope Event at the Bicentennial Pavilion from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Doors open at 5:30 for some fellowship and social, social. And then on February 26th, which is a Tuesday, I think it's a Tuesday, from 11:00, 11:30 to 1:30 is the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board Annual Meeting. I know a number of you have signed up for that. So, and if you haven't and your schedule changes, let us know. I think that they, they might be out of tickets by now, but you never know. So if your schedule changes, let me know.
I believe. Ms. Schumacher, am I down for that one? EDB on the 26th? Quick question, Mr. Caulfield, on the City Hall building improvements. I've noticed a bunch of landscaping work outside. I don't know if there's a new light fixtures or old or what are we doing out there?
So that's, um, so the landscaping was dying off and it was just not doing very well. So they, they, they ripped it out. They ripped it all up. So they were looking to plant some grass. I have suggested that they maybe go with some, some more shrub, shrubbery or something along those lines. That's more natural to our area. So, but more to come on.
Low water stuff on that or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's already irrigated and everything, but it was, it was just not looking very good. And, and a lot of the plants had, had died actually.
Great. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Caulfield?
Their life had come to an end.
Yes, indeed. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cubba, I had one question on the silicon improvements. There's a traffic light when you go into, is it the Ace Hardware or whatever right there in the middle? Is that going to stay or is that, it looked like it was removed, but I don't know.
It's been removed for the construction. However, a new one will be installed there.
Okay, I will, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, it was, they were too close together to keep it going. It was creating too many conflicts. So they did, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Anything else for Mr. Caulfield? Mr. Laura Sella and then Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Caulfield. Just quick on the Connections Magazine. As the items get put in there, be that parks or transportation or safety projects, can we make sure that there's dates on those two, just estimated starts and completions? So people have an idea when their area is going to be impacted?
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that, councilmember. Sometimes we'll, we'll take a look at that, yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, how far is the walk with the, the tribe?
For you?
We will have to, we will have to get back to you on that, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Not more than one mile, please.
I think it's a, it's pretty good length. I would say at least half a mile. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Small jog. Well, very good. Well, thank you. Why don't you go and stay here? Because in council comments, we're going to bring you back to chat a little bit about the process, the consulting process a little bit. So I'll need you for that.
Oh, you want me back for that?
Yeah, stay here. Might as well just stick around.
Oh, okay.
Let's go ahead and turn to council comments. And as part of my comments, when we get to it, I'm going to talk a little bit about the process and get feedback and we'll get some consensus for a path forward. And with Mr. Caulfield here to provide some guidance as we may need it. But before I turn to my comments, I'll turn to yours. Mr. Bokey, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, we had our shaped meeting on Friday and talked about a few things and one was the bill that as a city, we're having a little bit of consternation over. But I, I will tell you, the, the group as a whole did not have the consternation over it. Councilmember Rand Center was also listening in. I mentioned, I mean, the, the city manager had given us notes and explained that this has to do with the sales tax remittance program, which be over, if you agree to 40 years of, of low income housing.
4006 money or what?
No, it's just a remittance. It's really complicated, but everyone else thought it was a grand idea. Although I don't know that they think that they'll be, be using it anyway. So that gives you some idea. We're a little bit out of step on that. And then I went to the Caring for Kids Auction on Saturday. It was very nice and very crowded and I hope they did well. So.
I heard it went well.
Yeah, it did. It was, it was a nice event as it always is. Thanks.
That is great. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank Ms. Spear for coming in and presenting on the combining our climate change and urban forestry and tree canopy efforts. I think having a united voice, I think is a good way to approach that. So look forward to seeing what that looks like as it moves forward. And then I wanted to highlight, the city posted an update for this week's Hidden Heroes. And the article was really good. So Mr. And Mrs. Peters are coaches of high school track and field around Lakewood. And they're not just coaches, but they, they shape and mentor our youth and provide another voice of leadership to them that they may not necessarily have otherwise. So shout out to them.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bran Center.
Mr. Mayor, I did before the meeting this evening, go by the school board and give them a presentation. There wasn't a, a lot to do that. The, the one inquiry that they had is that they talked about the construction on Silicon Boulevard. And they, they, they made the comment that, well, it isn't as bad as we thought it would be, but I told them to be patient. They, it'll, it, 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 it'll get there to be able to go and, go and do that. That the, I, I also took note of, 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 of an action that was taken by this Clay Elm City Council. And the Clay Elm City Council, in the, in their efforts to attract economic development entered into some contracts with some, some developers to try to do things and they, 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 they overpromised incentives. Okay, that, that, that a developer could get if he did that. And there was a developer that bought a whole swath of timber lands to create into a, a thing to do that. And then the city of Clay Elm couldn't deal, couldn't provide all the incentives that they wanted. And a federal court awarded the developer $22 million is, in, in, in a judgment. And the, the, the Clay Elm City Council has voted to declare bankruptcy and consider unincorporating. So that it'll go off over there. So that it'll go off over there. So it is a cautionary tale to 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 say, you know, that that it's good to 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 know what you want, but not to want it at any price. Well, and I plan to go to the Asian Pacific Cultural Center event on 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 Saturday to be able to go into it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, it's never a good thing when your council has to declare bankruptcy of your city. So not a not a fun deal. I know the mayor of Clay Elm. That's a bit of a challenge. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Light week last week, but this week I've got the downtown neighborhood. Is that that's a different meeting than the downtown business thing? Is that or is that the same? Am I thinking of?
Same now. So council member, I get those confused as well because I thought there was a downtown business one, but apparently it's the it's not. It's the downtown neighborhood. So they're one and the same.
Okay, okay.
But it's mostly, I don't believe there's any business representation there.
Okay, uh, sounds good. I will be there on Tuesday or Wednesday, I guess it is. Nothing else.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. It was a light week last week and I would like to give a special thank you to Councilmember Laura Sella because he will be attending the Telecom American Lake at American Lake Community Center Woodbrook meeting tomorrow for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the Promise Board meeting Thursday. One of the things I had an opportunity to this the students was concerned about some of the policies that was being made. So I shared with them the importance of them. If they ever had a possi- opportunity to talk to their legislators themselves. And so they took that seriously because I told them they hear from us all the time, so they would make a bigger difference with them. So hopefully they get a chance that sometimes they have a Zoom meeting that they can do that. So that was good. L M C C Gala, thank you all for supporting. I'm looking forward to a great evening. If I don't have your check, I'm coming after you. But I do need your food topics because if not, your choices are chicken and vegetarian. So get that to them as soon as.
What are the other choices?
Salmon.
Two salmon.
Two salmon, okay. It's the eighth, March eighth. You, okay. You're supposed to be taking notes. One salmon, okay. And then that was my mayor. Okay, thank you. For the gala, we had seven nominees that for the award. So that was great. We put it out and people really did respond to it. So I was not part of the decision making, but that will be announced will be available on the seventh. So.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we were on. We were absolutely happy with that. Construction on still on Silicon Boulevard has increased the traffic on Phillips Road. So either way I go, they got me. And then Wednesday night I will attend the A L S graduation A M C Zoom meeting tomorrow to prepare for to talk about our trip to Scott Air Force Base that will be in April. So I think that's it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And if you want to collect on the check for the gala, it's three laps.
I'll count you out.
Catch me if you can. That's right. Okay, so busy week this last week, busy week coming up. I met with a couple of members of the Arts Commission who wanted to chat about their interest in promoting or working to form an arts district somewhere in the city where it made sense with the potential tax structure that might opportu- create the opportunity for funding for certain development activities. I told them that may be something that comes down the pike for council to review in the ordinary course. So I thank them for their their thoughts. On Friday, I attended the hundred and seventeenth annual Lincoln Day banquet downtown Tacoma, which is a big function for the Tacoma Pierce County Bar Association. Members of the Supreme Court were there. All the local bar folks and and judges and other interested parties. So it was a good event. Coffee with a cop I'll be at. I think that's tomorrow. I am speaking, I guess, at the Asia Pacific event on Saturday. So that'll be a good event. The the featured country this year is India, which we've not really had recently. So that'll become a nice new flavor to the event and I look forward to that. So if you get a chance to come downtown and enjoy that, I think they would appreciate it. And none of you spoke about a critical day that you should all be attending, which is Valentine's Day and the fourteenth. So I will make note of that with your respective partners and spouses that you made no mention whatsoever, especially Laura Coffield.
Yeah, every day, every day is Valentine's.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I would point out that no one spoke about having doing anything in conflict with the.
That's true, very true. Yeah. I'll make sure Helen knows that you you aptly noted that. So very good. So the the other subject I want to bring up obviously is the search process to find the next greatest city manager for the great city of Lakewood. And when we left our meeting last week, I I somewhat committed to at least sleuthing out some prospects for us to review and consider and not the be all and end all, but just to get the process kind of started for us. And those two proposals I forwarded to you or had, I think Brianna forwarded them to you or or Mr. Coffield. One was from G M P or the Greg Prothman folks. And the other was Charis Consulting. And again, the details of how we want to move forward are really up to the consensus of this council, but I think it's important to kind of get an idea as we sit here today, whether or not we want to bring either one of those folks in for a conversation with you so you can ask questions, so they can make a presentation. They have provided all of us their proposal. The funding, not the funding, but the fee piece of their proposal ranges between twenty one five and like thirty nine five plus cost, which is pretty typical. Mr. Coffield will probably tell us that the range is probably twenty twenty five thirty, but you know, those are the two ranges. The city attorney is chatting with me. We're not gonna take any action tonight, Mr. Attorney.
And that, Mr. Mayor, I'm just putting everyone on fair notice. This is not my first rodeo of this sort and we do need to be exceedingly respectful of the manager's role and of the public's right to see the process. So I may be intervening from time to time, possibly possibly jumping the gun a little bit with you. It's just that I would rather measure a bunch of times than cut once. I'm just gonna say that.
No, that's important to to point out. In terms of process, we're just kind of chatting tonight about next steps. And then, of course, there's going to be a robust public participation process like we had thirteen or twelve years ago now, or thirteen years ago.
Yeah, our our process has always been highly respected and and we will just make sure we keep it that.
Well, and while you're there, just so we put it on the table, there is an opportunity to either do an R F P for consulting work. But the question is whether or not that's required. I don't think it's required.
Well, it this is why I get a little jumpy and I appreciate the work that you did and I know that it was with the blessing of the manager. Administrative functions in a strong manager form of government are exclusively the province of the manager. So that you guys, he knew what you were doing and he appreciates you going out and getting those things. He could walk in and say to you, I've chosen, you know, this group. You don't necessarily have to accept that. You can tell him that you're pretty unhappy with the way he went about it. But ultimately, he can bring to you what he recommends. For example, he might not want to bring forward some search firm from another state that's never done a search here, even though they've got a great great reputation. There there's all kinds of firms that he could bring forward. He may exclusively bring two that are relatively competitive, local, respected firms, but you want a big national firm, you know, but that's that's something that all has to take place publicly. It sounds like you have a couple of candidates. I believe the manager's been fairly involved so far, so you haven't gone astray of anything. But no, you're not required to do an R F P. And in some ways, there could be some question about what you're doing to your process if you put too much of that on the front end. If you know that there are reasonably qualified groups that the manager brings forward and you don't have a reason to question what they're doing. And if you you get into the process and you're not liking the way the process is going, you can stop the process. All of that's within your purview. Does that get at what you're asking?
In a roundabout way, yes.
Yes, okay.
I was just trying to make sure legally we didn't have to do an R F P process. Yeah. So Mr. Coffield, do you have any thoughts or recommendations about process? And it's a little odd because if you were, you know, dead and gone today, we wouldn't be necessarily chatting with you about the process.
Right.
But here you are.
Well, but here you.
Yeah, yeah.
I love you too, man.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, and I was regretting what I said at Rotary when they called me and wanted to know why I was leaving. I was like.
No, the only way, reason I say that is I don't recall that Andrew Ninus was that involved in the process except to set it up. But anyway, I'll let you go.
My 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 role is 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 to sign the contract, you know, things along those lines. I I so I I will just say this. I I don't believe you need. I think you have two really good submittals here. I don't believe you need to go through the R F P process because I I will say, just based on my experience, I think those two are gonna rise to the top anyways. There are some, you know, out of state firms and this, that and the other thing. I I would just urge caution with those. The, you know, each of these two firms here have their pros and cons. What I would ask would be to allow, you know, my team and, you know, between, you know, for example, Michael Vargas and our H R director to kind of pull together, you know, a synopsis, kind of the advantages, disadvantages of each.
Sure.
And then kind of rate those and then bring that back to you with a recommendation for either firm rather than so have something that's a little bit more metric driven than purely subjective. So.
That would be helpful. Yeah, it'd be great. Yes.
And if I may, I I believe that your person last time was not selected through an R F P. I'm not sure exactly what all went into that. I believe the manager was did have some hand in that. And then after that, you had an interim manager. And you will just have to take my word that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that is required of staff, things like putting together panels, making sure all the logistics of the panels are done. And in between that, we're going back and forth with the council so that you're getting the process that you want. If you believe there are certain parts of the community that really need to be considered and so forth. So there there is actually a lot of work on the staff side that's going to be involved over the coming months.
The other, the other, you know, I know the council wants to move and I'm not saying move quickly. You want to move effectively and you want to move efficiently.
Right.
And so I don't know if I can be back in front of you next week, but certainly you know, the first the first meeting in March, I could be back in front of you with a with a with a recommendation. Something else to consider, not necessary, you could invite both of these individuals, their principals, and to kind of just talk with you as well. That's atypical. I I really haven't seen that done because I think they've both provided, you know, the adequate information that's needed to number one, do a good evaluation, but I think for you folks to make a make a decision as well. So.
I'll open it up for comments on that. And I guess it's twofold. Having Mr. Coffield and staff kind of noodle over the proposals to give us maybe a I don't want to say data driven, but a little bit of a metric driven approach to what might be our top considerations in selecting one firm versus the other.
And actually, that would also include checking their references as well.
And then the other question might be whether it's prudent to have a brief telephone conference with either one or both of them to just because there may be some questions that people want to ask of the consultants and just hear from them directly.
We could, we could, we could work out something like that.
We'll get some feedback first. I'll just go around the table. Mr. Brandstetter and then we'll kind of go around.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, in in terms of process, my I think my first concern in terms of sequential things to do is that I I I I think that we need to ourselves have a discussion in and we can can be in 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 public to do that. But I think that we really need to talk about what we want to tell whomever we choose to assist us. In other words, the the idea is that we we need to be of one mind of a consensus about what we are looking for. I mean, and and those options range from a clone to John Caulfield to something else. But if I go back to the eleven years ago, when 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 we were doing it, the situation was a little bit different because we had a city manager that had been offered and accepted another position. And so he was, you know, so he was gonna be with us a very short period of time and and be able to go and do that, that, you know. Now, similar to then, you know, we have a known date when Mr. Caulfield will will stop working, but we 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 also, I think, know that we have quality people already on on the staff. Should we, the timeline require there to be an interim city manager? Okay, which which worked out for to us. And this is, you know, this is not a, this is a an in between budget year. So it's that that's not so significant that we're tied up against that. But I think that the discussion that we need to have is so that we know what we want to tell whomever we get to assist us, what we're looking for. You know, eleven years ago, we had some some challenges with the city that we said we were looking for someone with the strengths to address those particular challenges. Where and and while the city is in in good shape in many areas, it we are also not without challenges. And we need and that could that could affect the attributes that we really wish to have sought out or at least highlighted in by candidates when they when they come to us. And 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 whoever we have assist us deserves to know that. So my thought is, is that while we can move and I think that it'd be a good idea to have discussions with whomever we see as our prospective consultants to help us that that before we call them in to talk with them, we should at least have some idea collectively about what we want to tell them. Not it's not so much about what they we want them to tell us. It's what we want to tell them that they're that they're looking for. And in that regard, I would just note that we have the unusual situation a week from now where we have a joint council meeting study session that has only consent agenda items and no study session discussion items. So we might be able to do that well a week from now.
And as I go around the table, my my thought, Mr. Brandstetter, good point about making sure that we have one mind on the attributes you're looking for. From my review of the proposals, once engaged, it seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's actually part of their process, which is to meet with us and flesh out what we're looking for to help them build the profile for us for the candidate search. I think there's some value in that facilitation.
That's correct. I would say step one is to bring on the resources that you need to undertake this. And if you decide to bring in an independent third party, like a recruitment firm, and and in both of the proposals, that's right up front. They would meet with you and others to get an understanding of what the candidate profile needs to be, as well as the job description as well.
Right. It's Mr. Pearson, Ms. Bell. Thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I I agree that that's the first process is getting someone in. I I don't know. I didn't have time to look over the the resume packages yet, but it it would be nice to you know, if we do get kind of like a recommendation with with what they've done to to see you know, if we do get kind of like a recommendation with, with what they've done to, to see who they've recruited in the past and what cities and kind of, you know, to see kind of where they tend to fall or push people or whatever. Um, that would be helpful. And then, yeah, I, you know, I, I assume that once we select someone, then we'll kind of have a separate thing to go through and, you know, everyone comes up with their top three, you know, things that they think is important in the next city manager, whether it be public safety or economic development or, you know, finance or whatever. So, um, we'll kind of go through that and I'm sure that'll be very well teased out. So, um, that's it.
And Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I have, uh, in a different organization worked with, I believe, both of these firms. And they do put you through a full process and they're really will lead you through and ask you all the questions that need to be asked um, in a very systematic way. So I think that either of them, I would like to hear from both of them actually, you know. But I know that they do have the process. They ask you the pertinent questions where you would get the attributes out and really be able to narrow down and work on the candidate profile. So I am for that to hear from both of them.
Okay. Mr. Boki?
Yeah, I really don't remember. I, 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 I trust the process that because I don't think we went through a selection process as a council to pick the last, um, firm. I, I don't remember.
I don't remember that.
I know Dawn.
There's four of us here that were here.
Yeah, well, I think, I, I thought Dawn pondered it frankly. As my recollection was working with Andrew, but, or maybe Heidi was there with Andrew. I didn't recall. It just was so long ago.
Yeah.
Your, your then-city manager suggested the, um, at the time, I think it was the Prothman firm. It's not under its current name. Um, and as I had mentioned earlier, along the way, when there were things that the council wasn't happy with about how they were proceeding, you were very clear with him. He was responsive to you. It becomes a little bit of a relationship as you go forward. But that was brought forward by, um, your then-manager, Andrew Ninus.
Okay, thank you for that. And I did like, I'll, I'll say just in general, I liked the process last time because there was some some opportunities for the public to weigh in. They actually interviewed. Um, I sat in a, a few of the interviews, I think.
Yeah, for sure.
I think we, we had ample time to look at the applications. Um, and, and kind of figure out what we, what we were looking for. Um, and the, the strengths and, and weaknesses of the candidates involved. So, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I guess, I guess we weren't as involved in the front end as I thought, but we, but that's a misnomer because I don't remember.
Right.
That we had, that we were involved in the front end. I just remember all of a sudden we were interviewing and we were looking at, we were looking at resumes, right? So I don't think that we did a lot of front-end, front-end work.
We did some profile work, I think, with Prothman Guidance.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll need to do that when the time comes. And I, I agree with that. I think it's hard to make a decision, especially as a body of seven different people. On how, who you're going to select when you don't even, you might not even know what you're looking for. So I, I do think that that's important.
The facilitation, yeah.
That we need to do. And then, and then we'll kind of see when we do the public outreach, if we do public outreach. Um, kind of where they stand because right now there's, um, and that has to be done well. So that's probably one of the things that we should discuss with whoever gets the contract because right now, if we just said, hey, show up, we know who would show up and we'd know what they'd say. I could give their speech for them. So, so we need to be a little bit, you, you know, I think we need to work at that a little bit. Um, and, uh, so anyway, that's great. I think we're on the right track. I really do.
Any thoughts or comments, Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just briefly, I, I would be in favor of the assistant city manager and our HR leader putting together sort of a scoring grid. So we have some data that's subjective or objective, um, or both, uh, for their recommendation of which firm to go with. I think it's within their wheelhouse. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I recall, uh, the last recruit we did, we all went through the stack of uh, uh, applications and pulled out the ones that we felt that was most qualified. And someone sitting at the end of the table always came to the top of the pile with everybody. So, um, Mr. Caulfield, you was it from the beginning, but we didn't know that. So, and I am, I'm, I have a good character, a feeling of a person's character. So meeting with them is helpful for me. Yes.
Would over the phone or via Zoom be okay?
That person is better for me, but I mean, either way, it can, that was just.
I'm at the, you're talking about the consulting potential, the two consulting firms you're saying? To select from one or two consulting firms? That's really the next first step. Oh, the, the applicants for sure.
Yeah.
We're just talking about the first step that Mr. Caulfield would help us with, which would be to identify criteria to choose A or B. And then as part of that process, whether we want them to be available over the phone to answer any questions or get a brief overview. Okay. So, sounds like we're okay having you help us move forward with some criteria to select. And if we could maybe have them dial in next week during the study set or come if they could, that would be even better. I don't know how you feel about that. Let's kind of leave that. Maybe uncomfortable for them to both physically come, maybe phone calls or conference call type thing, obviously in public.
Mayor, my recommendation would be, since they've submitted something to evaluate, evaluate, and evaluate that and then, um, and then at that point in time, present that to the council. And then I think based on that, if the council wanted to bring them in to speak with them, I think that would be the appropriate time to do it. Um, and, and the reason I say that, I mean, that's how we handle all of these types of professional services. Um, if you're going to bring somebody in for an interview, you bring them in at the end. Well, no, actually, we bring them in upfront.
Otherwise, it's hard to decide between the two because they're both relative, have both strengths.
Yeah.
In different personality types, different approaches, maybe. I've worked with the one. I haven't worked with the other one. You've worked with both of them. You've worked with the one. Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, and I, I've had occasion to work with both organizations that I've been a part of. But, but, but I also think that we, we, we have the option, Mr. Mayor, of, of, of you and the deputy mayor and perhaps one of, one other council member meeting with these folks. I don't think that we have to do it in a meeting with a quorum to, 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 to talk with them because I would be comfortable if like, so if Councilmember Bell and you and, and, and the mayor talked, and deputy mayor talked with, uh, these two folks and got an impression to be able to go and do that and came back with, with a recommendation to us. And I think that, that takes us out of doing things with a quorum, but yet doing it with a, with a, with a, with a, with a, with a clear committee and process. That would be my, uh, thing that would be cleaner because anytime we do anything all together, we fill this room up like maybe.
So, Mayor, I would, I would concur with that because on one hand, you know, my staff will handle the technical side. And then when we get to that point, having them speak with a subcommittee basically of this body.
Yeah, it'd be fun.
So, and actually, that's a, a, a lot of times legislative bodies will do that.
It's a little cleaner.
But I would, I would suggest you allow us to do the technical evaluation first.
Works. That works. Any else on that? Well, very good. So I, is it fair to ask if that technical work can be done before the next meeting?
Actually, the, I, I doubt it, Mayor. Um, that's just because there's reference checks to, and all of that. So I think that's too tight of a timeline.
Okay.
So I would say you're the first meeting in March.
That works. All right, we'll do it. Very good. Well, in the absence of any additional comments on that or further?
Unless you wanted to have a special meeting on the fourth Monday.
Yeah, right. Mr. Randstadter?
Let me just have an alibi on my comment. Given that the agenda for the next meeting is a regular meeting with a consent agenda and and a potential report from the city manager, you, you know, uh, I guess do we still want to start at six o'clock? Um, yeah, or, uh, or do we want to fill the available time between after six thirty? Uh, with, 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 with something that, that we that, that, that you may want to put on the agenda for us to discuss.
Um, I'd just like to point out, counsel, that you change your rules where that meeting starts at 6:00 PM. So, I think that's a.
And it's a regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting. That's correct.
Study session, so we're.
Oh, it's combined. It's combined. It's one meeting, but.
That's true.
That's correct.
Well, unless we have need for a special item, we have nothing on the study session agenda. We had the regular meeting. So, Mr. Caulfield's telling us he won't be ready next week to discuss this particular topic. So we couldn't do a special meeting for that or a study session item for that yet. Okay, just let, let us know. Okay.
I can, I can let you know as part of reports by the city manager next week.
Uh-huh, perfect. Yeah, great. Yeah. Yeah, perfect. All right, so we're going to recess into executive session for about twenty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten-one B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate. Council is not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. So at this point, we'll be in recess.